You are watching Access La Porte County Channel ninety seven. Coming up next is June twentieth, twenty twenty four meeting of the La Porte County Board of Commissioners. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the La Porte County Commissioners Meeting Thursday, June twentieth, twenty twenty four at six P M. Please stand for the pledge allegiance. Dionne, if you could lead us.
And I would ask for a brief moment of silence after the pledge in memory of a fallen lacrosse firefighter, Ken Caldwell. Thank you.
Road call?
Commissioner Graham Rosa.
Present.
Commissioner Haney?
Present.
Commissioner Marzinski?
Present.
All three are here.
Consider agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Consider approval of June's fifth, twenty twenty four minutes.
Motion to approve is presented?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consider consideration of claims. We'll start with payroll.
Commissioners for the period ending June seventh, twenty twenty four, in the amount of one million, four hundred seventy four thousand, five hundred forty two dollars, thirty one cents.
Motion to approve payroll as presented?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Operating expense claims?
Operating expense claims, the amount of two million, forty six thousand, six hundred and thirty one dollars, thirty cents.
Motion to approve the expense claims as presented?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Moving on to public comment. Public comment is not open.
Good evening. Steve Hallfield, six, seven, eight, two, east, one hundred south Mill Creek. First of all, I'd like to say kudos on the K O P with the rail. I you guys, the commission, Mr. Raridan, Matt Bishop, for getting us the grants we needed out there. I'm sure there's a lot more work. I'm looking forward to meeting with Mr. Raridan, see what his ideas are for the future on that. Now, for a little bit of the other side, Tuesday evening, the B Z A made, in my opinion, a very terrible mistake by approving that solar project out there in our area. Mr. Carr made some remarks on the radio about property rights. Never in our group did we ever say no one had the right to do, not to have the right to do what they want their property, but nowhere do they have the right to infringe on other people's property rights for their life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness with their property. I hope you guys stand up for the people like you did for Schultz Road in the middle of that industrial project to try and prevent that and help the people there. If you want to go look and see what happens to these projects, go to New Carlyle, look around, drive around. There is a mess. Section nineteen of the new ordinance requires the commissioners to approve the decommissioning and the road use agreement. I believe, Mr. Marzinski, you're in charge of that. I hope you keep a very close eye on these people.
Just got it.
Okay. You guys get the final say to approve that. If you don't approve those process, this, they can't go forward till it's acceptable to you. There's going to be, they want to make sure the county is protected one hundred percent on that, those processes. I'm going to be asking the sheriff to make sure if his project goes through. He has officers patrolling that area regularly to make sure they're observing our laws, weight limits, restrictions, and everything such as that, to make sure that they follow through what they say they're going to. Rich, you may find this very interesting. The property in front of you and behind you is being solicited by not only one, but two right now. So it may be different in your backyard, sir. You've worked your whole life to build a sellout property for what it's worth and value, and it might not be something that you'll get full compensation for. Next Tuesday, the plan commission makes recommendations for a moratorium to you guys and to beef up the ordinance, which then will go through a public meeting process and everything else. I believe two people on that plan commission will vote against this no matter what. I want you folks to listen very, very carefully to the public comment on this new ordinance, very, very carefully. I don't believe it's as strong as it could be. No disrespect to Mr. Bee Gee, but I still believe it's a weak ordinance, in my opinion. Other counties have much stronger ordinances, and I think we need to reach out to them and see what they've done in place, because this is going to affect, this project will impact this county for decades to come. We're not going to be here. There's no ifs, ands, or buts about us. No one's going to be one hundred fifty years old, because they're going to be forty years for this project. It's going to affect our children and grandchildren and a potential problem for them, in my opinion. So I hope you guys listen very carefully to the public comment on this new ordinance when it comes up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Public comment. Do we have anyone else for public comment?
Hello, Commissioners. My name is John Tucker. I live at seventy three eighty five West Oak Meadow Drive, La Porte. It's out in the country, of course, so we fall under the jurisdiction of the Sheriff's Department. I resided at my residence for almost eight years with my disabled seventy one, now seventy one year old mother, for almost eight years and been living in La Porte County since ninety eight, so twenty six years. For five weeks ago, I filed between the two of us twenty three complaints against the Sheriff's Department, citizens' complaints. They have fallen on deaf ears to the point that last week during the merit board meeting, we were defamed and lied about by Sheriff Hig. And I know as a part of the commissioner's responsibilities is the approval of budgets for the departments of the county. And it seems that there is a waste or an improper use that has resulted also in four false charges, three against my mother and one against me, due to deputies not filing accurate reports or not contacting us for our side of stories, that we have been denied service repeatedly. We've been called liars and you had profanity used against us by a detective. We have been disrespected. We've had inaccurate reports and statements taken. We suspect drug activity at the house across the street. One time I called because I tried to complain when I woke, got woke up, and I have to be up at four A M. because I've been working eighteen years at the steel mill in Burns Harbor. I was woke up by their partygoers intentionally solicited to make excess noise as they left. But the cop who showed up went to them first, even though I was the caller complaining, and then said they were having a painting party. Who has a nighttime painting party for painting a room? They actually said that. That's what the officer told me. But it's just become a habitual problem that where we do not have police protection in our rural neighborhood. I'm one of three steelworkers on my street that all work in the same mill. Nobody else has called to complain because they don't want to get dragged to court repeatedly like my mother and I have.
Could you repeat your name again, sir?
John Tucker.
John Tucker. Um, we'll have the county attorney look into it and then, because really.
I've, I think I've spoke to Mr. Paycheck before, and it's gotten to the point that I've been in contact with the Indiana State Police, the Indiana Attorney General's Office. The prosecutor's office refuses to talk to us anymore. The sheriff he refuses to talk to us anymore. And had basically last week at the merit board meeting invited us to sue the Sheriff's Department. I have lost in the last three years alone, ten thousand dollars in wages because of being dragged to court because of false charges and accusations by my neighbors who can get anything they want written up while we can't get our reports taken when we are the victims of harassment. We are the victims being woke up repeatedly.
Excuse me, I'm president. Mr. Tucker, I'm sorry. I do remember we may have chatted before. Is there a pending criminal person involving you or your mother right now?
There is one pending my mom currently, which is also a false charge.
Sir, I understand your, your position, but because there's pending, a pending matter, we have nothing to do with that. It wouldn't be prudent. I'll just say it won't be prudent for us to do anything to interfere because it's in the court, sir. And but I will speak to the president about this and we'll go from there. Okay?
Well, it's, it's just become a habitual problem that no one, we get a runaround. State police tells us to call the general, attorney general calls, tells us to call the sheriff. Sheriff tells us to call the prosecutor, and nobody will talk to us, and nobody wants to resolve the problem. So that's why we came here tonight to get, get it out to public. We, we may not be the only ones who are fallen victim to these issues of impropriety and disregard to equal laws.
We'll make it a point to talk to the attorney.
Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment. Do we have anyone else for public comment?
Good evening. My name is Dean White, three zero six six North U S Highway thirty five. I'm here once again regarding the vista view at Soldier's Memorial Park. In, in, in the Herald Dispatch newspaper on May fourteenth, it, it was printed that U County would have a resolution in two to three weeks. It's now been six weeks. And we, and I've been trying to catalyze this for several months and hoping that we could at least have that view for Memorial Day. You, you passed that deadline, and now we have the Lake Fest coming up on the twenty sixth. That, that view you could see from Pine Lake Avenue. It would invite people to, to the parks. Also, that park entrance you had mentioned does not say entrance. There's only two entrances, one that goes at that entrance there to Cummings Lodge. And the other entrance goes to the Parks Department, leading into the park, and neither one of them say entrance. So you have recently cleared some scrub brush along Waverly Road, but you have not tried and attempted to clean this vista view. And, you know, I, I, as I talked to Rich Marzinski the other day, and he said that the city was holding things up because they had some trees that they need to cut down. I went before the city council. They said they, 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 they don't know of that.
Okay. So what I can tell you is this morning I had a meeting with M S four. We do have the project all together written out, what the cost is going to cost us. I know that you had expressed that you had donations, you had gathered some donations. Tomorrow or, or on Monday, you'll be either reached by Mike Poland or Paul Vicary. And they are both in the M S four. They already have a plan all worked out. All we have to do is we have to figure out the funding. So if you can meet with them and talk to them about what you've raised so far, and then then we'll have to figure out what we have to raise. They have a plan of how they're going to get rid of the invasive species that are there, raise the trees up, and then plant some other vegetation so that this way we don't lose the slope.
What do you mean, raise, raise the trees up? What does that mean?
So we're gonna actually have someone climb the trees and actually raise the brush up on the trees so that you can actually get a clear off, you can get a view off the street. So instead of taking trees out, which our concern is that there's such a large slope that it would cause damage to the slope. And we also have a big sewer coming that's underground, bringing water from the parking lot across the street. So.
There's no parking lot across the street. The water's coming off of Pine Lake Avenue.
Actually, they've already gone in there and they've looked at it, and it's coming from across the street. It's not coming from, from the, the motel. It's coming from the other side of Pine Lake. And so they already have a plan. You can go over there. Like I said, you can either call Mike Poland with the plan commission. They both work for M S four now. And they'll be able to show you the pictures, everything that they've already planned out. Now it's just a matter, I know that you said you had collected some donations. You can work that out with them, and then you can figure out, they're going to figure out the money aspect of it.
Okay.
So we're ready.
Good.
Okay.
Bye, Derek.
Thank you. Public comment. Do we have any more public comment?
Good evening, Madam President. Commissioners, Alan Stevens, President, South County Community Coalition. I just want to really briefly read an email I had, I had sent to the commission this morning. Good afternoon, Commissioners. The South County Community Coalition discussed at a recent meeting the need to have more representation from La Porte County on the U S thirty coalition. The county is entitled to two representatives and two proxies. Currently, Councilman Justin Keel is the only representative. At the upcoming Commissioners Meeting, we would like to request the Commissioners appoint Don Parker of Wanatah to fill a representative seat. Mr. Parker has been an active participant in the U S thirty Pell process and is aware of the issues facing Wanatah and all of South County regarding the future of U S thirty through La Porte County. And I just, just wanted to say as we had a representative from N dot presenting on the, the Pell study here a couple of meetings ago. It's never been more important than now to have full representation from La Porte County to, to make sure we have our seat at the table, because they say if, if you're not on the menu, you're for lunch. And I believe that's true. We're getting ready to go into phase three on this project where they're going to be making hard recommendations on upcoming projects. So we, we do need to have full representation. Thank you.
So there was Don Parker?
Yeah, he's, he's the librarian in Wanatah. He's on the Wanatah Library Board.
Did you forward his contact information so that we can interview him and talk to him?
Yeah, I can go ahead and forward it to you.
Okay. We appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Michael Seitz, two twelve Lakeside Drive. I was one of the original members of the U S thirty coalition back in, when I was president of the Chamber of Commerce and helped set the commission up. And recently, the redevelopment commission heard the situation about the U S thirty coalition and the redevelopment commission, I believe, pays for the membership to the coalition.
Yes.
And I was instructed to be the representative from the redevelopment commission
Okay.
on the thirty coalition. But it, you know, doesn't matter.
Who, who's the president of the redevelopment commission?
Randy, Randy Nobody.
Okay, I'll talk to him and maybe we can make an appointment.
Well, yeah, and, and seriously, you know, and if, if the people in South County feel that, that they would be better represented by someone that lives, lives in that area, you know, I'm okay with that. But.
Let's try to sort it out.
Yeah.
Because it's, it's being brought to us for the first time today, and then we'll, we'll work on it.
That's all I wanted to do.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Mike.
Is there anyone else for public comment? Anybody on Zoom for public comment? Okay. Not hearing anyone. We'll close that, move on to department head comments.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Steve Ira, adult probation. So next Monday and Tuesday, the Office of Court Services, Indiana Office of Court Services, is coming to La Porte County to do a training at Red Mill Park for both probation and community corrections officers and motivational interviewing, which is a significant component of our whole risk assessment process and supervision strategy. So they're going to be here two days providing this training for us, and I'm here to get permission to utilize our probation fees to buy a broad in lunch, like a box lunch, and probably coffee in the morning each day. I discovered last time this happened, I need both commission and council approval. So.
Definitely have, we'll, we'll do a vote and try to get a motion for the commission.
And, and it's coming out of probation fees, so it's no, no tax dollars involved.
I'd make a motion to allow you to go ahead with that and approach the council for permission.
Yeah, I'll second that. That's the first I've heard of that. This is a thing we've been doing for years, every.
We've been doing it.
We gotta have permission?
We.
Spend your own money?
We, we had done another, we had done another training, same group. And we, we paid for it, and we're told afterwards that it wouldn't get paid because we didn't get permission from the commission council. And anyway.
Common problem with all the departments. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you very.
Sorry, Steve, for more silliness. You don't deserve it.
Thanks, Miss Rager. We, we appreciate you following the ordinances that are in place. We appreciate that. Thank you. Certainly.
We'll send you the bill, Steve, for the probably have to ask permission on that, too, though. Anyway, Jeremy Sbecky from the Parks Department. I just wanted to mention, you know, thank you for the, the property up there in Rolling Prairie. I am going to be talking with a consultant to try to get some idea of what kind of price it would cost to get a plan, to get some, some, a plan with some phases there that would, would phase out developing that into a park, met with charity and some of her staff this past week and, and just kind of getting an idea for how much cleanup and stuff like that we can, we can get. And, but yeah, I think someday that's going to make a really nice park and, and we're going to get a good plan in place and, and try to start looking for funding once we have that plan. So.
Well, thank you. Thank you for all you do.
Yep.
Department heads, any department heads on Zoom? All of Zoom, no, because I don't see any hands up. Do you see any hands up?
I see mine, that's all.
Okay. Okay, so we'll close.
No, I see my hand up.
Okay, go, go right there.
Yeah, I wanted to mention that something that happened here at the complex Thursday. Our H R director, Monique Thomas, organized a food truck event. We had seven food trucks out in the parking lot and music, and it was so nice. The camaraderie, kind of bring back old memories, the way it kind of used to run of employees coming out together and utilizing the food trucks. It was a beautiful day, a little windy. Did blow some stuff around, like they blew that stuff onto my pants, but that's okay. But it was so nice, and I really appreciate the effort that Monique put into this, to do this for all the employees, and several comments about how nice that was. Nice thing.
It was a big hit in Michigan City as well.
Yep, and Michigan City, and I didn't, wasn't make it to that, but the one in La Porte was awesome and good weather. So thank you, Monique. Also, yesterday was something I've been working on for eighteen years, Steve mentioned. We called it the Golden Spike Event, where we now have the C S X Railroad has access to the entire park at K O P. Nice little event down there, and I mentioned all the people that have been working on this for, well, even before me, I've only been on there eighteen years, but it was really good to see this finally, finally happen. And, you know, people have asked me, are you, aren't you glad it's just finally going to happen? Did you ever think you'd see it? And I said, yeah, I did from the beginning, because failure was not an option. We're, we're not done. We're going to complete the, the northern loop to bring in the Canadian National Railroad. And we've got to figure out how we fix the roads that we don't own, and we need another road in and out of there. We got two chemical companies in there. We got one road in and out. To me, that's an issue. So we're going to continue working on that, but it was a really big deal. Especially for me personally, because I've put in a lot of blood, sweat, and tears, meetings, and trips out of the state, and we finally got it done. And one last thing, today's Darlene's birthday.
Happy birthday!
Thank you.
Department heads, any other department heads? None on Zoom? Okay, we're going to close department heads. So we're going to go on to request, consider permission to approach the council for roof replacement at Red Mill Park. Jeremy, back up here.
Yep. So I sent you an email several weeks back about this. Roof is not failing, but it's twenty, it was put on in nineteen ninety nine. It's been twenty four years, I guess, twenty five years. So it's, it's a shingle roof. You're starting, we're starting to see where the, the rocks are, you know, as a roof gets older, you start seeing that shine from underneath the rocks, starting to see that. The roof on the south building, we just replaced that using our non-reverting funds. That one actually did fail, and it wasn't as old as this one. What I, what I'd like to see, what I'd love to see is that we put a metal roof on there, and, and I gave you pricing on that. The, the low bid on that was R L roofing. So there, we have the shingle option and we have a metal option. The, the, the shingle option is just under thirty thousand. The metal option is just under fifty four thousand. So I don't know what way we would want to go with that.
I expect the motion that we grant, Jeremy, permission, go to the council, and whatever they want to pay for is, it's up to them. They're the guys with the money.
I second that.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thanks, Charlie.
Consider barn committee discussion of possible utilization of barn across from the fairgrounds.
Good evening.
Good.
Steve Jensen. Rich and I talked a few days ago. I'm here representing the Friends of the Barn. That was a committee county, I don't know if you're aware of this, George or Joe, but about twelve, twenty twelve, a group of us came together with Phyllis Marks to my rear here to save, put it, put this, the old county barn. Let's, let's see what we can do to save that. It's a cultural heritage piece of, of work that represents what our county, what this city was built on. So having said that, also, the Indiana Barn Foundation, which Mark Kurth back here is also our county representative for that. So we want to come tonight to try to present an idea, and this might be, well, it is, it's a late request, but the Lake, La Porte County Fair is coming on. And we'd like to see if we could open up the barn for one day, July twelfth on a Friday. And with your permission, we could sponsor that. We, the Indiana Barn Foundation, as far as having dossiers there, we could have some parking and, and just open, just to educate people in conjunction with just with, with the Alice Chalmers Romley Museum there. There's, there's a good tie-in. Back when we were doing this, it was said, well, why do you guys want to do this? And Phyllis Mark, you know, she said, was talking to some folks back then, and she goes, why do we have to have a purpose for wanting to do it? Let's just get it done. You know, we're, we're talking like in twenty thirteen, there was like twenty percent of the barns left in Indiana. There's, prior to that, there was thirty thousand barns, wooden barns. I'm talking post being barns. Kind of, you know about this from, from Pioneer Village, from Pioneer Land. So there's all that to say, there's like ten percent of, of our barns left of what post being barns in this, in this state. Oh, my goodness. So, you know, we're fortunate, we're blessed to have that barn there coming in. They're good. So it's, it's, it greets visitors coming in from the west. It's beautiful. Have you two ever been in that barn?
I have.
So you know, it's rich, you know, we're farm boys, and, and we go way back with that kind of stuff. So you know, what was the purpose, why we wanted to do it? Just because it needed it? It had a hole near the size of like a good driver Volkswagen bug through there. So it's saved now, but let's, let's utilize this thing. How many of you know there's a tunnel underneath Highway Two? That tunnel could be dug out. It's probably about four feet right now, but they ran dairy cows back and forth. The pasture over there and come back in. I think that's neat. That could be utilized. I realize the state owns that, but that could be a nice path from Romley, Alice Chalmers. So to say that, that's a different battle for a different time. Here's the issue that we may have because of J B West owning the county home.
Bring that up.
So we, we gotta go through their, their property.
No, actually, we, we have a, an easement there, and we've got a right of way to access.
We're okay with that.
We are, yes.
And we can park there. So no, no contact would have to be made.
As long as you stay off of their property, we'll be fine.
Yeah. Okay. Does that be fine out there? Because we went out there and did a walk through the other night and just seen what kind of things needed to be addressed, and I, I don't know if there's a definitive line that I see. Do we, there's, there's something need to be run as, as far as a tape or something like that?
We may need to put some markers out there. It may not be a bad idea. Just, I'm trying to think of the, depending on how many people you have visit, I'm trying to wonder if there would be enough parking out there. Maybe worthwhile, maybe I can try and get a hold of J B. enough parking out there. Maybe worthwhile, maybe I can try and get ahold of JB West and ask them if we could utilize just a little bit of their property just for parking. Just to make it a little bit easier for you guys. I'm trying to think off the top of my head of how were, I don't know how many people will be able to park there.
Well, there is.
Head, but I, I, I see a hand up from, uh, from Mr., uh, from Mr., Mr. Kurth. He might have a answer to how big. Come on.
Sure.
Just the argument with Steve's already said, the Indiana Barn Foundation.
Can you come up to the podium so we can, uh, hear you?
Mark Kurth, nine six nine, South Forrester Road. Uh, Indiana Barn Foundation had done an open house in LaPorte County. I sent you all a little, uh, summary of that prior to the meeting. And so this would be run very similar to that. And we, the, the traffic at that time was half a dozen cars at a time over the course of the day. So, so we didn't have a parking problem at that time.
Like was it during the county fair and it wasn't across the street from the county fair?
Maybe, uh, you know, more attendance, uh, it, it's not the first time we've hosted this type of an open house at the county barn. So, um, we'll try to be as prepared as possible for that and handle any staking off of parking areas that needs to be done. If you can communicate, you, you know, that request, we'll take care of that. We're going to do all the cleanup before and after. So we'll handle all that with volunteers. So, you know, our goal is to make this as turnkey for you all as, as we can with that.
And you would really want to do it the week of the fair versus like a couple of days before the fair or after the fair? And my only concern is because I think that we should contact the Sheriff's Department and make sure that there's not an issue like with, you know, extra traffic on two.
Right. Well, al- also there is, so there'll be cones historically placed out there on Highway Two, right?
Yeah.
So, uh, we, we do have traffic slowed down. But yeah, that's, I, I, it wouldn't be a bad idea to.
Yeah, just kind of mention it to them and then, um, and then contact the Fair Board. Um, and so, you know, I know we could potentially make a, a decision tonight, but it should be pending, um, us talking to, because we really don't run the, the fairgrounds. That's all ran by FMEC. So we should get probably ahold of Randy Novak and have him, uh, be made aware of it, get ahold of the Sheriff's Department. And then I know that we're fairly looking at, you know, a week, two weeks away and we'd have to do this fairly quickly. So maybe we can get a, a vote of support tonight and then just try to coordinate. I'm sure we can make, we can make it happen. But I just want you to be aware that we should probably contact these other entities as well.
I would make a motion that we grant, uh, support from the commissioners for this contingent upon checking with the sheriff and checking with JB West.
Sure.
And so that they know what we're doing. But, um, I would make that motion that we give a motion of support to go ahead and do the contingent upon those.
And I'll, I'll second that with a friendly amendment just, uh, for our attorney, Mr. Paycheck, just to, if there's any waivers or anything necessarily that we need, just to make sure, you know, let's say JB West volunteers are parking lot, we can get them an exit, you know, some sort of exemption that, uh, you know, for, uh, I don't know, whatever the case might be, just in case there's any, yeah, any kind of, any, just thinking out loud of potential roadblocks, um, you know, there would be, so there won't be anything. So.
Sure.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, may I just end with this? Uh, so the, the committee that we originally started with, Bob Carpenter was, was a part of that. I don't know if you all remember Bob Carpenter, Rich, you probably do. His wife, uh, just sent me a little brief letter here. She asked if I would read this and it's, uh, it simply says, my husband, Bob Carpenter, was part of the group that restored the county barn. And in fact, as a professional engineer was, uh, the project manager. He passed away recently, just about a month ago. Um, have a house full of guests today, but as I write this, uh, I want to be part of the plan to open the barn back up for the upcoming fair in LaPorte. She mentions that she would encourage you as commissioners to vote, to do what you need to do to make this happen. And it sounds like y'all have, but she just wanted me to reiterate that and, um, for her to be a part of that. So, hey, thank you so much.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Um, any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Steve, I would.
You're set.
I would encourage you also, uh, when, when you're talking about, you know, guys like us, we, we used to work in those barns. We know how everything works.
That's right.
Kids don't. And, and maybe like the FFA groups or maybe like some of the 4H groups to take those kids in there.
Oh, I think that's.
And, uh, explain, explain how the, the little machine works in the gutter and, and what all that stuff's about, you know, um.
Well, our 4H guy, kids are going to be pretty tied up that week over, across the.
Well, I mean, I mean, throughout the year.
But it would be nice, that's why I said, I mean, it would be nice if you, if you opened up on a different day as well, like, you know, plan one in a month or two months from now.
Even like our Pioneer Land when we have, what, two weeks of, of school tours there.
Absolutely.
So, and, and saying that, I'm not sure who manages the, the grounds as the County Highway Department in, in charge of that, right? So, do we have an insurance policy that would cover that? Things like that, like bringing the FFA in and the 4H groups and?
Yeah, so I don't know how our insurance, we're going to have, we're, yeah, we're going to have our attorney look into that to make sure that we have coverage across the street as well. And, you know, we really do have a great team that works on that fairgrounds. It's a collaboration of the, um, Fair Board Association. We have Pioneer Land that I'm a part of. We have FMEC who runs it for us, for the commissioners. And so, and we're always trying to give them the most support that we can. And I highly encourage you to try to get that opened up. And if we have to figure out the whole insurance end of it, then that's what we're going to need to do. So.
Very well. Great.
We'll be in communication in the next couple of weeks.
If I could ask the follow-up question, are, are we responsible for contacting the, the Sheriff's Office?
No, we'll do it. We'll do it.
And, and, um, just to clarify, when, we need.
After the meeting or if one of you would just like to write a, write your phone numbers and then hand it over to, uh, Scott Paycheck before you leave. If you don't stay for the whole meeting, then me and Scott will go ahead and have a meeting with the correct departments and we'll make sure. And then we'll get back to you and, and let you know that it's a, it's a green light and we're ready to roll. Okay?
Hey, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you. One, one thing crossed my mind, not, no, you're good. One thing that crossed my mind, just for the public certification, that county barn is insured. Um, I think the, the question was, are we insured for different events and other things other than just general insurance on it? So that's where, that's where that would come from. So no worries, that barn is insured. Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Consider permission to add fleet tracking telematics to highway vehicles. Charity, uh, Lasser.
Okay, so after, um, meeting with the county insurance carriers last winter, it was suggested that we look into some sort of fleet tracking and telematics program for our fleet. Um, supposedly it's supposed to help with our insurance rates, having this in place. So after looking around and going over several vendors, um, GeoTab is what I think is best for the highway. It's offered through AT&amp;T FirstNet and priced through Sourcewell. And it offers up-to-date tracking on our fleet. Um, it gives alerts on vehicle activity. And it also will put all of our fleet maintenance into a maintenance program where you get up-to-date, like if a check engine light comes on or if, um, you know, needs all changing, it's all going to be updated into the server that we do not do now. Everything's by paper now. It, it's going to be eighteen eighty-seven a month per vehicle, which comes out to around twelve hundred dollars a month. And then we can do the option of adding our seasonal equipment, like our mowers for a little extra. It, the total for the year is around fifteen thousand for everything, even seasonal. And that's in our budget. We don't have to ask for any additional money. So we're just asking for permission to get, implement that at the highway.
Okay. What's the pleasure?
You're going to need to go to the council.
I got the money.
Oh, you think you got your own money?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, motion to approve.
Uh, one quick question. That's, uh, those are the monthly fees. Are there, is that like a lease of the equipment to have that happen or is there any upfront equipment cost?
So the equipment is just like this little plug and it plugs into the, um, port in the trucks. And they send it to us. We install it ourselves. The equipment is free through Sourcewell.
Okay.
Um, the only equipment we would pay for is if we do seasonal and it, it still comes out to like seven forty-nine a month. So.
Alright, thank you. I'll second that.
So we have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you. I know you worked a long time on that, uh, project and you really, you really did a good job at, at interviewing different companies. So we appreciate everything you do. Thank you. Consider travel requests to Abba, Albuquerque for adult protection service training, September sixteenth and eighteenth. Sean Bacon.
Well, it's Catherine Schmidt, the Director of Adult Protective Services tonight. Sorry. Good evening. Yes, I'm asking for permission. We have the funds in an, uh, American Recovery Plan Grant from the state. So there are no county funds involved in this travel for our investigators to go to the only, uh, adult protective services specific training in the nation.
Motion to approve, second.
So we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
Safe travels.
Consider permission to approach the council for vehicle replacement and trading, and trading three used vehicles. This is Eric Fensterma, um, Maker. Um, he could not be here because he's going to be at some training, but, um, this is something that, um, he really needs. And so it would be, having the ability to trade into three vehicles versus trying to hold on to the vehicles and sell them at an auction or anything would really speed up the process of us, us having the ability to get that vehicle replacement.
Yeah, motion to approve to have, uh, have them go to the council. Um, the council will be getting a presentation by Enterprise, something I've been working on for years to try to get a different system here instead of buying vehicles and then driving them into the dirt. Spend a lot of money to keep them on the road and then sell them for junk. Uh, that we get a fleet management system. We can save money and we don't have to worry about this kind of stuff happening. Uh, I'm, I'm hoping that maybe at the commissioner, at the council meeting, when they get presented with this, good timing on this, when you get three vehicles that, uh, they're expensive. I don't know if you've priced vehicles lately, but, um, I would hope that the council takes a very close look at this to see, is a better way of doing business and, uh, saving the taxpayers money in the boot. So I would give them, I would make motion that we give them permission to approach the council.
So we have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Consider permission to approach the council for projects at the Juvenile Center, uh, Service Center Museum. Circuit Court Three Traffic Department. Cheryl Listensky.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Cheryl Listensky, Director of Facilities. So I'm here for three different requests. The first one would be, um, I request to approach the council for additional appropriation in the amount of fifty-one thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars and ninety-two cents for two heating units at the museum that are no longer functioning. Um, I did receive three bids and DA Daz was the lowest pick or the lowest bid. And that's, that's the one that I'm requesting for, the fifty-one thousand, five sixty-eight.
Motion to approve.
Two cents. Okay.
We have a motion on the floor.
Um, I, did, did, or did you forward us over those other bids? Or, uh, anything else?
I did not. I, you have a copy if you'd like.
Um, not, not right now, but no.
Okay.
Thank you. Alright, uh, second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, I would also like to request to approach the council for the building of a counter and security glass at the LaPorte County Courthouse Traffic Department, Superior Court Three. The counter is twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine dollars and the security glass is fifteen thousand.
Even?
Excuse me?
Fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand. And the total for both would be forty-three thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine dollars. I would like it, um, to take it to council for whatever their pleasure is, to do just the wall or both the wall and the glass.
Motion to, uh, give you permission to, uh, approach the council, see what they want to do. They got the money, we don't.
Yeah, you, you also got three bids on this?
Um, I did not, um, for, it was under fifty thousand.
Sure, so un- under fifty thousand, um, uh, or I'm sorry, quotes. I apologize. Did you get quotes?
No.
No, neither?
I got one quote.
Okay, um, for, um, I will, um, stand.
So I'll step down and I'll second the motion. All those, uh, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Nay.
Okay, um, the next request to approach the council for additional preparation in the amount of forty-one thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars for the juvenile center for their toilets and repair the chase leak and the two secure cells that are currently inoperable.
Motion to approve for you to go to the council.
Did, you, you receive any quotes or bids for that?
I did not.
Did not.
It is up to the council.
Okay. Um, also I do want to inform you that, um, I'm currently getting prices on the gym floor at the juvenile, um, center.
Let's finish this one first.
Sorry.
So we have a motion on the floor. Um, you're not going to second, correct?
No.
So I'll step down and I'll second the motion. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Nay.
And this is the forty-one thousand, four hundred and ninety, uh, fifty-nine dollars is for the, um, bathrooms that are not operable.
And two of the secure cells.
And two of the secure cells. And this is in the juvie center or is this in the juvenile center?
It is in the juvie center. Yes.
So how long have you not had these operable?
Yeah, approach.
Yes, please.
Yeah, these, I've been, uh, first of all, good evening commissioners. Pleasure to be here for you. Um, before I became the Director of the Juvenile Center, we had two cells, um, which were not in operations. And the reason that they were not, not in operations, this was before Director Listensky's time, is that they could not get parts in at that time. Um, currently, we have approximately six, um, six residents charged with adult gun charges. And we've been full, filled to capacity and we're only able to house ten and we need those cells immediately. Uh, part of our requirements from the DOC is that we have to have a minimum of twelve, twelve beds. They were understanding because we couldn't get the parts, but it's time that, that we have to get that fixed and finished. And that's why it's so pertinent to have this done. So I hope that gives a, a little clearer explanation as to why we need those items.
So over a year? How long have you been?
I've been there a year and a half and it was like that before I got there. And the information that was given to me is that they couldn't receive parts because it is an older building. They've probably been there for the past thirty-one years. And so we've made some attempts, tried to go, um, through some other means that were unsuccessful, where we even went to someone who had a similar, uh, type toilet and drinking, um, operation, but it just didn't work for us. So.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, so I'll, I'll step down and second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Good luck with the council.
And this is for juvie. Then do you have anything else for us?
I just wanted, uh, let you know that I am currently, um, working on getting prices for the gym floor that's needed at the Juvenile Services Center. And also I am working on getting re-quotes of the juvenile center roof and the mobile classroom roof. I, I did previously get bids, uh, for the roof and the mobile classroom roof, but the bids came back, um, inconsistent. And some quotes were shingles only, some were rubber roofs only. Um, some had, um, drip edge added. So there wasn't a clear, this was before I became director. Um, so I didn't approach these vendors on these quotes.
And maybe we can, um, we can have, um, our attorney help you out, like to write something out a little more specific. So that this way everyone will be quoting it exactly the same way. That's something that we can assist you with.
Um, yes, I would.
But it's definitely something that we have to address because I know that, um, me and Dion Campbell have gone through the center and, and this is something that I've been working on with him since last year. Um, there's been a lot of difficulty in trying to get this through. There's been a lot of difficulty in trying to get this through and we really, you know, this, this, this is something that services children. And and our juveniles, giving them the best care and the, and and the best facilities that we can. And I'm not saying the Taj Mahal, but just giving them basic um housing that, that, that they can be proud of and and someplace that they can, they can, we can change them around. I mean, it's, it's not just the counseling that they get from the um adults that we have there and the services that we're providing. It's also the structure that we provide for them. And so I would really, really like to see this happen before the end of this year because this is gonna be year two that me and and Mr. Campbell have been working on this and and we really need to get this moving. So I appreciate everything you do out there.
And well said, and just like to add to what you said.
Could you please come up to the podium? I'm sorry.
What you said, uh, I think the juvenile center has been in operations for thirty-one years and neither one of those items have been addressed in thirty-one years. So I think it's, it's time to get those things rectified. Especially, you know, I love La Porte County and I think that we should represent La Porte County in the best light possible, not something extravagant, extravagant, but just basic things that we need. You know, the center last year generated over two million dollars, which went into the county coffers. And so uh that along with being recipients of part of the lit tax and and other monies, hopefully we can get that done. And these are necessities that uh need to be fitted and remedied, so.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're set.
Thank you.
Moving on to old business, consider second reading of property transfer ordinance. This would be for the health department. Do we have to read it by title or?
Motion to approve by title only? So move.
Okay, so we, we have a motion.
Second, to read by title only?
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Commissioners, this is um La Porte County Property Transfer Ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash two B, three, three. Oh, the Board of Commissioners, La Porte County, Indiana.
Motion to approve.
Second, do, do we need to hold another um public comment period for this since it's an ordinance or was that covered under the last one?
This is a second reading.
Okay.
By title only. So is this a second reading, so we should be covered on it?
Okay, all right, thank you.
You, you, you need to use your mic, please.
Yes, this is the second reading uh from the last meeting, of course. But if there's any, obviously, uh, public comment or anyone, they should be invited to speak.
So do we have anyone from the public that would like to comment on this? Do we have anyone on Zoom that would like to comment on this? Okay, moving on. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Now we have to do consider um, consider second reading of Health Department fee ordinance.
Second, read by title only?
Uh, second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, you can read it.
This is ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash four, La Porte County Health Department Fee Ordinance.
Motion to approve.
The second uh the opportunity for uh comment, if there is any.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment? Anybody on Zoom? Seeing no one, we're moving on. We have a motion and a second. No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Moving on to new business, consider addendum to Bridge Inspection Contract U S I for twenty twenty through twenty twenty-three fiscal years.
Good evening, Commissioners. Jerry Sullivan, the La Porte County Engineer. This is addendum to the contract. There is two four-year contracts, a total of eight years for phase one, phase two, phase three, and phase two A for the two, for the bridge inspection. Currently, the Federal Highway Department has not approved the funds for the twenty twenty-one, twenty, or twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-seven contract. So Endot has directed us to addend the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three contract to get money so we can proceed with the, with the, the new contract should be the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-seven contract. And eventually, we're gonna get, you know, the federal highways money, but they haven't approved it yet. So that's kind of a holdup right now with everything that's going on, but so I appreciate if you consider letting the addendum go through.
So would this addendum tie the next commission to twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-seven?
They, they're taking, they're addending the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three contract.
Okay.
To add money to it so that it can be used for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-seven contract.
Easier explanation, there's, there's eight years there. And they, instead of doing four and four, they did five and three. And now they need to correct to four and four. It's a paper show. It doesn't cost the county.
It's not costing any, just paper show. Robin Peter to pay Paul right now is basically what we're doing.
I damn's way of making it more difficult.
Yeah.
Are we tying the hands of the new commission coming in till twenty twenty-seven?
No, no, that contract has already been signed by, by the commission.
Motion to approve.
I'm sorry, Mr. Sullivan, can you be a little more specific on that? As far as um the years going out to twenty twenty-seven, when you say the?
Yeah, you, the contract um for the twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-seven bridge inspection, it's a four-year contract and that has been signed. You signed that already. It's a four-year contract.
And we signed that at the beginning of this year?
Yes. I think it was last.
Last year.
Yeah. Yeah, it was last, I could, I don't even have the exact date, but it was last year.
At the beginning of the year.
I, I would have to check and see when it was signed. I know the, the September is our contract month with Endot. So it had to be sometime after September. I don't know, November, maybe sometime in that frame, timeframe.
It's the way Endot does business. They do four years in a row. They don't do it every year, so they can project their budget.
Okay, well, my concern was just knowing that two members may change on the commission. But if the contract is already signed, then at this point, there's nothing we can do. We just have to.
That's correct.
This is more of a funding issue at this point.
The reshuffling the deck, so to speak, if I'm even saying that right. But uh, th- this, that's why it's called an addendum, because it's an addendum to an existing contract that they're assigned and authorized. So uh, I have no problem with the, the board approving this. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion.
Have a motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
No.
I'll step down and I'll uh second. Do we have discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Nay.
Moving on, consider signatures for cover um sheets on Bridge ninety-seven and fifty east over the Kankakee River.
This is, it's just, the cover sheet is basically acknowledgement of who the commissioners were at the time when the bridge design went through. It's, it's almost like a plaque, I could say, you know, that goes on a building, only there won't be any plaque on the bridge. But this is just a little bit of recognition of people involved at the time. Yes, that's all it is. I mean, if you, there's nothing contractually, if you don't wanna sign it, that's fine. That's basically all it is, it's just a little bit of a recognition for you guys.
Motion to approve. Second, signed it.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Consider um.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Consider resignation, sick days of animal shelter director Eric Hayes.
Eric's on Zoom because he's at another event. Uh, we've checked, he's got, he's got the days coming. I hate to see him go, but uh, he's got it.
He has the years with us?
Yeah.
Okay.
He has an amazing uh opportunity to better himself in life. Although I don't, wouldn't be my choice to move to Texas, but that's what Eric wants to do. He's been a good guy. I would make a motion, do we approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Good luck, Eric.
Indeed.
Consider transitional duty program, Monique Thomas. Is Monique on um Zoom? I know that you worked with her on this project.
I, I did.
Kind of um give us a little information or background on it?
Well, to be brief about it, Madam President, it's just to assist our employees that um have a workers' comp claim to transition them back to health or, you know, back to full duty status sooner rather than later. So this transition duty program, let's say, for example, someone's injured and they have restrictions, then we try to accommodate them in a least or a less restrictive setting within the department. And and to make sure they're being managed and their care is being updated to get them back to full duty status sooner rather than later. Uh, I will say that we did have our workers' comp attorneys review this as well too, and they had some input. And and this is the final draft, so I, I am fine with it as presented. Yes. Motion to approve.
I'll second that and this is, this is something we've kind of been looking at for a couple of years now and also ties in line with some of our uh workers' comp insurance that we moved over to uh thanks to uh John Jones and uh and his team. Has tried and get us some better rates and this brings us in line with that. And hopefully it does get people back to work sooner. There's, there's a lot of good scientific data that, and studies that are done that shows that it gets people back up to speed, back to work sooner and also gets them paid their full amount for actually doing work as opposed to sitting at home and getting that lesser amount. So it's kind of a win-win for everybody, including taxpayers.
So I'd just like to thank Monique for her hard work at this. I mean, it wasn't easy. There was a lot of uh work and uh sweat that went into this.
Another example of her hard job, her hard work that she does.
We have a motion, we did, do we do the motion in a second?
Yes.
Okay, so motion to adjourn?
Oh, uh, uh, we did a motion a second, we didn't call the question.
So we have a motion and a second. Um, all those in favor say aye.
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 Motion to adjourn.
A second.
We have a motion a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're set.
Aye, aye, aye.